Welcome, everybody, to the Town Council meeting of April 17th. Could I have a roll call, please?
Thank you and good evening. Councilmember Marsha Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Mariko Sayak.
Here.
Councilmember Barbara Spector.
Here.
Vice Mayor Steve Leonardis.
Here.
Mayor and Chair Rob Rennie.
Here. All right, so next up, we're gonna, I'm going to invite my pledge leader to come up, Brooke Pierce Percy. So come on and stand over here. So let's see. Brooke is in kindergarten at Blossom Hill Elementary. She loves science, ballet, singing, acting, spending time with her family and friends. What kind of acting have you done? Have you been in any plays?
Um, no.
Do you have any that you're planning to be in?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's good. We'll be waiting expectantly for them. It also says for community service that you like to help with beach cleanups. That's great. I like to have the beach clean. We don't want all that trash floating out to the sea. It says you help with toy drives, and you like to help your mom with a hurricane fundraiser. That's really good. Okay, so now we're ready to start the pledge. If everybody could stand for us, and I'm gonna give you the mic, and just ask people to join us. And the flag is over here. Ready? Go ahead and start when you're ready. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So let me get this back. So go shake Steve's hand, and then Marsha, and come back this way. All right, here's a gift for you, and then shake Mariko's hand. One more hand for our pledge leader. Thank you, Brooke. Okay, next up, I'd like to invite, is it Donna and Paul Novi up? We have a commendation for, please, please join me up here. No, no Paul tonight? Okay, well, it's important that the restaurant keep, keep, keep running. So this is part of our small business, big applause commendation, and it says, the proclamation says, "Whereas the Pastoria and Market is owned by Paul and Donna Novi, who work each day alongside their family and staff at their location on Main Street in downtown Los Gatos. The Pastoria was started out of the Novis' desire for Los Gatos to have a neighborhood pasta shop. Then it opened its doors in 1995 on the day of the annual children's holiday parade. The Pastoria and Market is known throughout Los Gatos and the greater Silicon Valley for fresh food and friendly service." And I've been there many times, so I know. "The Pastoria and Market regularly gives back to the community through their support of over 20 nonprofit school and sports groups through donations and cooking classes. So now let it therefore be resolved, the town of Los Gatos does hereby render with a special appreciation and commendation to the Novi family and the Pastoria Market for over 23 years of service to the Los Gatos community." Thank you. Okay, let's get a picture with. All right, so go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council. I'm super nervous, because even though it's been 22-plus years, it's my first award. And I couldn't have done it without, of course, my husband and my son, but also I brought some of my girlfriends here tonight that have supported me through all kinds of things, whether it's being short-staffed and just running down and helping, or Carol, who was with me when I was in the planning stages years ago, to working for me even through rough times without any pay, just, you know, trying to get it all going. But also, I wanted to thank, I have at least one of my past employees here tonight, Caitlin. She worked for me for, since she was a small child, and her brother works for me now, and her mom has helped me through the years, tons and tons, and you just can't, you just really can't do it. It sounds funny to say it takes a village, but it really, that's probably the best saying that I can think of that goes with it. Anybody that owns a restaurant, like Nick, knows exactly what I'm talking about. You just don't know what's gonna happen from day to day. But I really want to make sure I take time to thank the people of Los Gatos, the residents, all the locals, because they made me what I am today, starting out as a little pasta shop. They would come in and just give me all kinds of support and encouragement, and tell me, why don't you add a little menu, why don't you do some takeout, why don't you, you know, add a little bit more? And slowly, you know, within about nine months, we wrote a dinner menu, and we became a restaurant. And luckily for us, within a year, we got reviewed by the Mercury News on an anonymous review, and the phone started ringing, and it's been ringing ever since. So we feel very blessed, and we're always very supported by the town, and we actually really super enjoy giving back to the town, too. And that's just been really the key to our success, and we've been just very, very blessed. So thank you, Los Gatos, and thank you for the award. Thank you to the council for the award. Hi. That's all they have to say. Thank you.
Great job, Donna. I hope the Pastoria stays for many, many years more. So next up, actually, let me get my glasses again. So this is Poetry, National Poetry Month, so we now have a proclamation about poetry. So it says, "Whereas National Poetry Month seeks to highlight the extraordinary legend, legacy, and ongoing achievements of poets, introduce, introduce people to the pleasures and benefits of reading poetry, bring poets and poetry to the public in innovative ways, make poetry an important part of our children's lives. And whereas the town of Los Gatos has appointed Stan Garber as poet laureate, Mr. Garber is engaged in efforts to make poetry an essential part of the arts and humanities in Los Gatos, affecting every aspect of life in Los Gatos, including education, the economy, and especially community pride. So now therefore let it be resolved, I, Rob Rennie, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the town of Los Gatos, do deem it appropriate and do hereby proclaim the month of April to be National Poetry Month within the town of Los Gatos, and call upon our citizens to make poetry a part of daily life in Los Gatos." So I'd like to invite Stan Garber up. And we'll, we'll have a paper version for you in the future.
Oh, very good. Thank you, thank you. My story is just like Donna's story. Los Gatos is a place where dreams come true, and so she, she has this incredible restaurant, and I got to be the town poet. And, and it's, I can't even begin to tell you what it means to me. When I was, when I was 11, I was on a Little League team, and I loved playing baseball on a Little League team. I wasn't the greatest player, but I was good on this team. And then I got this phone call that they wanted me to go, and that I could go to the majors, that I could go to the next level, and, and I wasn't sure what to do. And I, I stayed on my minor league team, and the next day at practice, the coach gave me a little patch, a little captain's patch, to put on the sleeve of my, my jersey. And it's one of the biggest things that ever happened to me, was to be the captain of this Little League team. And, and my, my town poet story is just the same. I'm a school principal, and so I have to give speeches. And so people don't want to hear me give speeches, and so I write poetry. That's what I do. It just comes out of me easier. And so I would go next door, and I would read it to Jean Nelson, an elderly woman who lived next door, and, and it would break up her monotony, and, and I could practice. And then one day, this is in 2010, this is eight years ago, Jean Nelson holds up a clipping from the, from the Weekly, and it says that, that the town is choosing a town poet, a poet laureate, the first one ever to dedicate the new library, and she holds this thing up, and she's in her 90s, she said, "Stan, you would be so good at that." And I was thinking, yes, I would. I would be, I would make, I would make a really good town poet. And the, and the best, best part of the story is, is that I applied and I lost. And then two years later, I applied again, and I lost again, and I kept at it, and I finally won. Yeah, I didn't give up. I had perseverance. And so I've got to do the most amazing things over the last three years. And so like today, for example, I got to give the invocation at the Junior League Volunteer Luncheon, and so I, I didn't know what to expect. And, and so I go to, I go to the Villa Ragusa in Campbell, and I go, I go into this room, and there's 59 tables with 10 women at each table. There's 600 women in there. Oh, my God. And, and, and I was representing you as the town poet, and I got up there, and they liked what I said. I represented you well. Like what I said was exactly what I was supposed to say, and it was well-received, and, and I would never have been able to do that if I, if I wasn't the town poet. I've, it's, the experience has just been full of all kinds of wonderful things. So, so those are all the stories. So I'm gonna read you two poems. The first one, and it was a foreshadowing from the Little League story, it's a baseball poem, and it's the first poem that I ever wrote where I actually thought it was good. And I didn't, like, hand it into a teacher where I got an A on it, but like, I wrote it, and I thought, you can write poetry. And I have a little poetry book, I like that, too. It's aptly named "The Baseball Game." "All around were many fans, old and young alike. Sometimes the pitcher threw a ball, sometimes he threw a..." "And right nearby, I saw a girl with freckles and short hair, and when you talk of having fun, I'm sure she had her share. I wondered just how old she was, I guess it didn't matter. Just then the home team came to bat, and Reggie was the batter. He took three balls without a strike, then took another sign, before he hit one long and deep, he'd homer'd down the line. The ball bounced right beside that girl, then sailed up to me. I wrapped my hands around that ball, and it was mine for free. The little girl smiled up at me, though her eyes looked kinda sad, and I think because I held the prize, the ball she almost had. But instead of feeling glad about that ball I caught, I felt as if I took her ball, and that I should have not. So I walked down to her chair, I said, 'I bet you're eight.' She said, 'Today's my birthday,' and I just said, 'That's great.'" I gave the little girl the ball, and her eyes, they shined so bright, and I think I felt best of all, 'cause I knew I'd done right." And I liked that one, I liked that poem. And I started writing as many poems as I could after that, and sometimes they're not very good, and sometimes they are good. Sometimes they say exactly what it is I want to say. So because I had to, because I had to apply three times to be the town poet, I didn't get to dedicate the library. I didn't get to do it, like, like Parthenia Hicks did. And then after Parthenia Hicks was Erica Goss, and so I am the third town poet. So, but I was around for the fifth anniversary, and I got to write a poem about the lot, the fifth anniversary of the library, and I like my library poem, and I'd like to recite that for you. And I, and I dedicated it to Jean Nelson, who has since passed, but she would be proud of me, like the lady who held up the newspaper clipping, like, she would be so pleased that I didn't give up. "Our library's special, you can tell, approaching from Main Street. So taken by the building's structure, you pause at 50 feet to gaze upon its many windows stacked like shiny shelves, while inside, books are sorted through by tiny magic elves. That's the kind of place it is, a sanctuary to learning. You could sip a tepid cup of tea and read a novel burning, or climb the staircase oh so high, and imagine where it goes, then stretch yourself a little further, stand on tippy toes, read something delightful, something mysterious, something dear to you, something so very curious that no one really knew. The old man by the fireplace, the child sitting on the floor, this library isn't a perfect place, it's only slightly more." Thank you for letting me be your town poet.
Thank you, Stan, and thank you for your persistence, so that we did get you to be our town poet. Okay, so next up is Closed Session Report.
Yes, good evening. Prior to tonight's regular session, council met in closed session to discuss labor negotiations. No action was taken that requires reporting under the Brown Act.
Okay, council matters with Councilmember Spector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since our last regular council meeting, I have attended the Conceptual Development Advisory Committee, CDAC, meeting, where we gave input on a housing project on Roberts Road. The Finance Committee also met, and we made decisions on several matters relating to our unfunded liabilities, one of which is before us this evening. The Water District Committee meeting met. Again, we had, we on the committee received input from the, from the Water District, but we took no action. And then also, over the past several weeks, I've had many meetings with members of this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sayak.
Okay. Since our last publicly-held meeting, there were three Cities Association meetings I attended, the Executive Board meeting, Legislative Action, as well as the General Committee meeting. Three items worthy of, of the council, as well as public's information. The Cities Association did send a letter to the VTA Board, asking them to look at continued funding for the Highway 85 study. We all know how congested that 85 study is, and so we were asking for funding that looks at possible options. And invitation to Senator Weiner of the Assembly of the Bill 827 that looks at redevelopment along transit corridors, and we have invited him to attend the May General Meeting. And we also passed a resolution that confirms our, our commitment to firearm safety, and that will be shared with the town manager, and if you could just share that with the rest of the council. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Councilmember Sayak. Since our last board meeting, I attended the LAFCO Board, where I am a commissioner, and it was a very short meeting. I also attended the VTA Board meeting as an alternate. I wasn't in the decision seat on that time, I'm just listening. The thing of significance was, the board has finally voted and approved the single-bore option, as maybe you've read in the paper, there have been long debates on the dual-bore versus single-bore, and the dual-bore was gonna tear up Santa, Santa Clara Street in downtown San Jose for four years. It took a while to get BART on board, that that was the better option, but they are now in agreement, and the VTA Board passed that, and they made decisions on which stations, whether it was gonna be, I think it's gonna be the West Station on Santa Clara, and where, and the North Station location at Deardon Station, so they are ready to charge forward with, with that. I also attended the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Authority Risk Oversight Meeting and the Board, the Board Meeting. Also attended a Council Finance Committee with Councilmember Spector, and the, there was a VTA Policy Advisory Committee meeting, which I'm also on, and I attended the Cities Association Board that Councilmember Sayak was at. And then yesterday was really fun, as part of my being on the Board of the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Authority, we got to go visit the California ISO, that's the Independent System Operator that keeps our high-voltage lines running and at voltage and, and efficiency. They gave, basically, Silicon Valley Clean Energy Authority is, CCA is the term we use, Community Choice Aggregator, and most of the ones in the, in the state that are already formed or in the process of forming were there, so we all got a tour. It was kind of a meet-and-greet, here's what we are, the CCAs, because we basically schedule, schedule energy into the ISO for them to help keep the, the grid operating, and we learned, we learned about them also, so that was very exciting. And that's it for me. Council, Vice Mayor Leonardis.
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. Since our last regular meeting, I attended the Treatment Plan Advisory Committee meeting at City Hall in San Jose, where we talked about replacing about $150 million worth of aging pipes at the facility. And I also attended the West Valley Sanitation District Board of Directors meeting, where we adopted the annual budget.
Thank you. Councilmember Jensen.
I didn't have any formal meetings that I attended on behalf of the town, but did meet with several residents regarding items on the upcoming agendas.
All right, thank you. Town Manager Matters.
Thank you. I have three items. First of all, on Sunday, April 22nd, I'd like to invite everybody to our Spring Into Green event. Our mayor will be giving the State of the Town address at 11:30. Second, we are continuing to recruit for our adult commissions. The deadline is April 25th, and youth commission applications are due on May 4th. And finally, I'd like to point out the new artwork in our council chambers this evening. This is thanks to the Los Gatos Art Association. On Thursday, April 26th, at 6:00 PM, we will be having a reception in these chambers, and the public is welcome to join us. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So next up is our consent calendar. I have eight items on the consent calendar, and for those that may not realize it, one of the items is staff requesting us to continue the, the North Forty specific plan work. So just so you know that that is on the consent. Would any members of council wish to pull an item off of consent? Seeing none. Do I have any cards from the public that wish to pull an item off of consent? No, and don't see anybody interested, so I'll come back to the council for a motion. Councilmember Jensen.
Move approval of the consent calendar consisting of items 1 through 8. 8 is the North Forty, and the request for continuance is, for those interested, is until June 5, our meeting of June 5.
All right, do I have a second? A second by Councilmember Sayak. Any discussions? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Seeing none, passes unanimously. Next up should be verbal communication. Turn my page. Does say verbal communication. I have several cards. Let's, let me start with Austin Trillo or Tullo? I can't tell if that's an R or a U.
Yeah, it's Trillo.
Trillo.
Yeah, my name's Austin Trillo, Los Gatos resident, and I work at the New Museum Los Gatos, also known as NumU, and it's just a friendly reminder of our 23rd Annual Homes Tour. It's this Saturday from 9 to 5. Tickets can be bought on our website at www.numulosgatos.org, or please come visit us upstairs, we're right above the chamber in the Civic Center Plaza. We are hosting seven homes in the historic Johnson neighborhood, and it should be a fun-filled event throughout the town that day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I guess I should also introduce, verbal communications is an opportunity for members of the public to address us for three minutes for items that are not on the agenda. So next up, I have Sherri Burke.
My name is Sherri Burke, and I'm a resident on Alberta Way. I'd like to talk about traffic on Highway 9 between Los Gatos Boulevard and Santa Cruz Avenue. This is a connector between East and West Los Gatos, and also an entrance and exit to Highway 17. This road is frequently backed up, and you have long waits, whether you're going straight or turning on any of the streets it intersects. None of the lanes, straight or turning, accommodate enough traffic, and you frequently wait to get into the lane you want, then wait again for the traffic light to change. Backups occur frequently throughout the day. Highway 9 is two lanes in each direction as it approaches the bridge. So one lane in each direction becomes an exit-only lane onto Highway 17, with any through traffic in that exit lane having to merge left. Highway 9 is pretty much one continuous lane in each direction as it goes over the bridge. The straight-through traffic lane has to accept mergers from traffic crossing onto and off Highway 17. After those mergers, it is still one lane. An additional straight lane is created for traffic exiting from Highway 17, and that traffic must cross over two lanes to turn left. This creates frequent backups in all directions, most notably in the AM, from 7:30 to 9:00 as the day begins, from noon to 1:00 or later for lunch hours, again between 2:00 and 3:00 as all schools let out, and finally around 5:00 when business workers end their day. A survey was recently presented to parents, asking for their interest in busing students to school to reduce traffic around the schools. Heavy traffic is acknowledged for busing, but rejected for evaluating traffic from new development projects. While busing as a means of reducing traffic from residents is pursued, applications from developers to increase commercial space and bring in more traffic is reviewed. The commercial development proposed on Alberta Way includes 280 parking spaces, and presumably at least as many cars will be added to daily traffic, plus more traffic added for vendors and visitors to the space. The proposed redevelopment at Santa Cruz Avenue and Highway 9 also increases commercial and retail space, and will add more cars. The North Forty will surely add more- more cars. The North Forty will surely add many cars, even down here when completed. There are other redevelopment proposals pending that may add more cars as well. Are we asking parents to bus their kids to school because traffic is too heavy, while at the same time allowing developers to increase the size of their developments and therefore increase traffic? Are we not putting the wants of the business community ahead of the needs of our residents? Thank you, and please put the needs of the residents first.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Burke? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Okay, so the next one up, I'm not sure I can read the card. I think it's Thomas Dunn. If not Thomas, please correct me.
Was that bad? No, it's Thomas.
Okay, good.
Yeah, my name's Thomas Dunn, and I live 420 Alberta Way. And I'd like to just kind of talk and touch again on the concerns that you're all familiar with, that we've had over the past two years, with this project being built on Alberta Way. And the thing is, it hasn't changed. It's still the same continual problems. Size, bulk, mass, and height of the two-story office building. Two-story underground parking garage. Doesn't fit into the neighborhood, doesn't blend. Style, or the size, the shape of it. The loss of the views that it's going to, to cause of the Los Gatos Mountains. The traffic congestion that you just heard Sherry talking about, another 250 or 300 cars trying to get in and out of Alberta Way. The safety factor that's not going to be there for children, families, seniors that use this as our neighborhood. We walk up and down those streets, and it'd be unsafe. For the past 30 years, there was a 36,000-square-foot office building in that location. Not once did we have a problem with any of this. The views, the traffic, the size. We all fit in and got along well with the neighbors. Now we have a developer that's come in, and he's proposed something to build three times the size of that, 93,000 square feet. That was denied. Then he reduced it, and reduced it again, down to two times the size, 74,000 square feet. That was denied. Why? All for the same reason. It just doesn't fit. You've got to work on these things that we're bringing concerns about. Now, the last minute, the developer has submitted another revision of seven, of 4,000 square feet that we haven't seen yet. We're unhappy. And all I'm asking is that, I just hope that you don't approve a revision that we haven't seen, or had a chance to review, or a chance to look at, yet. And I think that would just be a complete disservice to the town public process if that took place. So I'm just asking you, if the information has merit that you received, then remand this back to the Planning Commission, or at least hold another new public hearing, so that we can all have some comments and some say on what's going on.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Dunn? Seeing none. Oh, one. Councilmember Jensen.
It's not actually a question for the Speaker. It's a question, I think, for Mr. Schultz.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dunn. You can sit down. We'll go to Mr. Schultz.
So Mr. Dunn's comment brought it up, and I was actually curious, as procedural matter. When the public portion of a hearing has been closed, as it has with Alberta Way, and Alberta Way is then not scheduled as a publicly noticed item for this meeting, how do comments that directly impact and address a public, a public hearing that's been closed, get considered by this council, or get recorded?
They should, they should not be recorded. They should not be used in your deliberations because the public comment period has been closed.
So are you advising us to not consider what we're hearing this evening?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I have follow-up questions, but that's not really on the agenda. I'll work on it next time. Let me call up the next person. Rick Bowden? Bowden? Bowden?
From what I just heard, I'm not sure my meeting here makes any sense, or what I just heard makes any sense. I'm Rick Bowden. I live at 420 Alberta Way. And I had a couple of thoughts on this project. One of the thoughts, I've been on the Board there for four years. And just to pick one item out, we spend about $25,000 a year replaying 50-year-old plumbing underneath the ground that just is deteriorating and falling apart. One of my concerns is, what's going to happen when they start digging a two-story garage? You know, the pilings are going to start pounding in. What's going to, what's it going to cost us as a HOA to continue to keep our property up? So one of the things I would propose is some sort of financial bond, what, I'm not sure what the right term, term is, that could help us repair stuff as it gets shaken apart, as the structure across the street is going to be built. So that's one of them. And the second item that I've got, and I want to just suggest, is we know the developer wants to lease as much, as many square feet as he can. And we would like to see it smaller. We'd like to see the views. All over town, we're putting in housing development, or not developments, but putting basements in housings. And, you know, light, light walls and all light, and all that. Why couldn't we propose something with this developer that maybe can have close to the square footage he's looking for, but maybe put part of it partially underground, so we don't lose our views?
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bowden? Councilmember Spector.
Not for him, but for the town attorney.
Okay, you can be seated. Thank you, Mr. Bowden.
I ask the flip side of Ms. Jensen's question to the town attorney. The, once the public input to an agenda item has been closed, does that keep people from coming to verbal communications and saying whatever, mindful of your statement that it's not part of the record?
So, again, it's not part of the record, but we haven't closed written comments. So anyone is still able to submit written comments. But public comment has been closed, and because of due process laws, too, without the applicant being here, you are not, as I said, you're not supposed to consider any comments that are made in public comment. The mayor, as the presiding person for our meeting, certainly can stop any public comment to be made if it became overburdened and didn't let us finish the business, because actually, it can't be used the same way as a judge might admonish a jury after an objection's been made that's been sustained. It's the same here. You're not supposed to consider public comment after public comment has been made. But since it's at the next meeting, if, if we had more time, and there was going to be more meetings, then I certainly would counsel with the, with the mayor, is, is if there was, you know, an abuzzed amount of people that were going to be here, that were going to speak, then we'd have to decide how we were going to make certain that the public comment didn't happen, so you'd be able to get to your business items. Does that help explain?
I think so.
So, so with that, I, I don't have an overwhelming number of cards, so I'd like to continue inviting the public to, to spend their, their three minutes speaking to us. Next up, I have Paulette Sato.
Hi, I'm Paulette Sato. I've been here before. I teach in Los, or Palo Alto, and I live at 420 Alberta Way. I understand that this is not on the agenda tonight. But my concern is with the parking and the traffic. I believe this is a food truck for 57, Grill 57. And on the other side, maybe a garbage truck. I'm really concerned about the construction because there's nowhere to go. If there was an emergency that needed to, a vehicle that needed to come through, or people just going to work, there's very little room to pass. And I'm just dreading the people that are coming in to do the construction, because there's going to be a lot of trucks, and a lot of just buildup on that road. And there's just no room for it. I think most of what we are concerned about also has been already mentioned, but just the idea of, just the amount of bulk in the construction, when it's going on, is going to be overwhelming to our little road. And especially because it's going to be twice to three times more than what's already present there. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Sato? Seeing none. Thank you. Next up, I have Juliet Thorn. Or Julie Thorn, Julie Thorn.
Hi, how are you? So, Paulette didn't show you the other picture. I just wanted to show you.
Yeah, please speak into the mic, so that people at home can also hear you.
Is there a button I need to turn on?
Oh.
You didn't see this picture. Can you blow it up a little? No? Yes?
Turn the knob, yeah.
Like that. I mean, they're delivering.
Spike it.
They're delivering at Grill 57, or Best Western, the garbage truck, the third truck. I, you didn't see that picture, how it's a cluster, as they say, in not so many words. And then, the other one's perpendicular now. Anyway, okay, so I just thought that was a good picture. Last meeting, we had the developer presented this view, perspective, and, I'm sorry. And he said, this is how his building, his new building would preserve the views. But he took this from the grassy knoll, my neighbor's yard. It's up a driveway that you go up, and then there's a grassy knoll. So that's not really a, the public's view, the neighborhood view. And I just wanted to make sure, I'm sure you guys realized that last time, that he presented it, that that's not, I mean, how many times do you go on a walk and go up some stranger's driveway, up to their porch? So this is the real sidewalk view. You see, it's the same car as before. That little guy. And there he is, right there. There. That's the real, true street view from across the street, not the other one we just looked at. Okay. And then this picture is from the side of the street where the development's going to happen. We also walk on that side of the street. That's the Las Casitas side. And so, obstruction. That's it. So I just, just want to make sure that we know that the original picture that the developer used is not, is not telling the true story. And I invite you to come by Alberta Way. I'm sure you do. I think we've seen you around there, right? Maybe this last week. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any questions for Ms. Thorn? Seeing none. Thank you very much. I have no more cards for, for verbal comment. Would anybody else wish to adjust, address us on something that's not on the agenda, and even not Alberta Way? Okay, seeing none. I will close the verbal communication, and move on to Agenda Item Number Nine, which is conditional use permit for 21 College Avenue. And I'll let the staff take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you tonight is a request for a conditional use permit for a restaurant with alcohol service at 21 College Avenue in the C2 Zone. Pursuant to the town code, a restaurant used in conjunction with alcoholic beverage sales for consumption on premises is allowed with a CUP in the C2 Zone. The Planning Commission considered the application on March 28th, and recommended approval to the town council with an additional condition of approval, requiring the applicant to install signage on the site, requesting that their patrons be quiet as they exit, as they exited in consideration of the neighboring residential uses. This condition has been added to the conditions of approval as number seven. A desk item has also been provided, which includes public correspondence received after the publishing of the staff report, and answers to questions received from a council member prior to tonight's meeting. Based on the evidence contained in the staff report, staff recommends that the town council adopt a resolution approving the request subject to the conditions included in Attachment 5, Exhibit A. This concludes staff's presentations, and we are available for any questions.
All right. So at this time, would council members wish to ask any questions? Seeing none. Then let me open the verbal communicate, well, we'll start with, verbal communication, we'll start with the applicant, so you get 10 minutes. But you don't have to take 10 minutes if you don't need it.
Okay, good. I was up here last night.
Close to the mic. Make sure people at home can hear, too.
My name's Nick Defue. I own Nick's Next Door right now, and I owned Nick's Now maybe prior to that. And the idea Sherry and I had together is to change that cigar lounge into a restaurant. And the, the idea of mine was to be, have a raw bar. So with full liquor and beer, beer and wine, and just do a small little restaurant next to the one that I have. So I'll have control of both that area, and completely two different, separate liquor licenses for each space. So it'll be two different leases, two different entities. And then the idea would is to have both spaces available to do lunches and dinner. If, right now, we're just planning on doing dinners if we get approved, but, you know, with the option of being able to do dinner, lunches and dinner. So I think I've had a pretty good record in town. I've been, been here for quite a long time, cooking, being a chef, and now owning now for 10 years, in conjunction with the other restaurant, altogether 10 years. Started back in 98, working at, actually 95, working at Igadi as a cook. And, you know, moving my way up to the brewery, the Los Gatos Brewery, Cafe Marcela, you know, many restaurants in town. Proving myself that I can run a great, a great business, and be respectful to the neighbors, and be respectful to the, the town, and donating plenty of my time and energy to many schools, many different fundraisers that I do. And I just want to keep it, keep it going, and just add a little bit more to, to the space, into that area. So I, last time I was up here in front of the, the Planning Commission, I got a little emotional. I don't want to go down, down that route, so I'm going to keep, keep it straight. And just, if you have any questions, I'm, I'm here to answer any questions. I just didn't want to get emotional on, on that side of it again.
Okay. Well, let's see if you have any questions, council members. Anybody like to ask questions at this point? You'll be back after others speak, so they can ask them then. It's, I don't see any questions, so thank you. We'll, we'll have you back. I have two cards so far, so feel free to turn in cards on this item. First up is Dick Caskill.
I'm Dick Caskill. I've lived in Los Gatos for 50 years, kind of across the street from Nick's. I thought today was going to be the question about whether Nick's could move into the cigar shop. Is that not the case?
That, that is what we're discussing, opening a raw bar in the cigar shop.
So is the problem the raw bar, or is it getting rid of the cigar shop?
I don't know. There, there is an application to open a raw bar in the cigar shop.
Okay, so the cigar, the cigar shop is willing to move out?
I think that's up to the landlord in the cigar shop.
Well, I would just say, this is Los Gatos. Why the hell do we need a cigar shop? Especially right next door to a restaurant. That's ridiculous. Does anyone disagree with that? Okay?
Thank, thank you. Any, any questions? All right. So we, we don't think we need a cigar shop next to Nick's. Next up, Scott Cannelli.
Hi, I'm Scott Cannelli. Thank you for taking the time to consider this. I live directly across the street, looking down at Nick's Next, Nick's Next Door and the cigar shop. And as a neighbor, I've lived there five years. And so I'm here to strongly urge you to support this. Living right in town, you couldn't have a better neighbor than Nick. The way he runs his business, the clientele that it attracts, is exactly what we need downtown and in Main Street. Anybody who would move downtown and expect there to be tumbleweed and crickets, probably needs to choose a place that's, you know, it's not downtown San Francisco, it's downtown Los Gatos. But the, the sounds and, and enjoyment coming from Nick's is always something that's really nice. And so even, I'm on the fourth floor, looking directly down at it. I get any sound that comes out of there, and it sounds great. And I- And I, you know, I, I have to say that I would enjoy not having the wafts of cigarette smoke coming up, cigar smoke coming up. But even the, even the cigar lounge has been a good neighbor in terms of sound and everything like that for the whole time that I've been there. But the biggest thing is that Nick builds relationships, and he's built relationships throughout the town. He's responsible. He is accountable to all of his customers and to all of us. And he's exactly the kind of person that we want to promote and see succeed in Las Gatos. We need more of that. And so I'm just gonna, since the mayor has proclaimed this Poetry Month, I kind of feel obligated, so I'm just gonna end with this. You have brains in your head, you have feet in your shoes, you can move any direction you choose. So I suggest that you choose to support Nick's Raw Bar. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Let me see if there's any questions for you. Any questions for Mr. Cannelli? Seeing none. Thank you. Thank you. So I don't have any more cards. I, I see one. Please, please come forward. And you can just hand your card to our Assistant Town Manager and give us your name at the mic, please. And you have three, three minutes, or less if you like.
Thanks. My name is Laura Lerner, and I'm just inspired by my neighbor Scott here. I also live across the street. And unfortunately, I haven't had as good of experiences with a cigar bar. It's kind of a separate issue, but they actually haven't been a particularly good neighbor in terms of noise and, and in terms of interacting with when I've needed help with something. However, I am certainly optimistic that it will be different with Nick. I've been to his restaurant, had some delicious meals there, but he's always been very accommodating. And I do feel much more confident that he will be a good neighbor. And so I'm quite happy to see that change. So I just want to put in my support and say thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's, any questions for Ms. Lerner? I don't see any, so thank you for, for letting us know. Okay, I still have no more cards. If nobody else is coming forward, then I will invite Nick back up to give us a closing statement of whatever length you like, up to five minutes.
I, you know, I too have not had a problem with cigar lounge. So that, that being said, the idea is that to answer Mr., the cigar lounge is, is leaving at some point. So the idea would be between landlord and I to, to, to take over, take it over. And that's, that's it. So it's nothing to do with the cigar lounge at all, with, who they are, who's there, or anything like that. It just has to do with, with what we want to put in there as a, as a team and as, and as, you know, just the two of us. So that's, that's the basic, the idea. What, you know, what we're proposing is, we'll do, we're gonna have a restaurant there. So yes, restaurants, you know, with, with an outside area, there might, there will be no, there will be noise. But what, what we'll, what we'll do is we'll do what we do at Nick's Next Door. We'll take care of it. We'll make sure that, that our patrons are, are, you know, quiet as they leave. If we have to tone them down, then we'll tone them down. We understand the whole situation. We get it. We're not just gonna, we're not blindly gonna try to have this big party at, you know, right there on the corner. We want to be respectful to the neighbors. We want to be respectful to the town of Las Gatos. That's, that's kind of the idea. So if there was any question about that, that's, that was, that was, you know, where, where we're coming from. And, you know, like, like I told the, the Planning Commission, I'll do the best I can. I'm gonna run the best business I possibly can. And, you know, I'm not saying I'm not gonna make any mistakes, but I'll, I'll do the best I can to, to make sure that it's a, it's a great spot. And, you know, I know Sherry, you know, it's her building. I mean, she, she's been here forever. She's not gonna let anybody, you know, whether it's me or somebody else in 20 years from now, or whatever it is, she's not gonna let anybody do, do anything that's gonna disrupt this town or be a burden to this town. She, she cares about this town just as much as I do, if not more so. So that should be considered in this, in this situation, is not just me, it's who the landlord is in this situation, and that she does care about that whole block because it's, it's her property. And so that's something that should be considered when you're making your decision. So it's not just about me, it's about who the landlord is too.
Okay. Let's see if we, if you have any, any questions for Mr. DeFue? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much. So with that, I will close the public testimony and come back up to council to see if you have any questions of staff or to make a motion. Councilmember Jensen, I think, had your name, your hand up first.
I'd like to try a motion. My motion would be to adopt a resolution as contained in Attachment Five approving the request for conditional use permit for restaurants serviced with alcohol and the conditions that are included in Exhibit A, which also includes the sign. I've seen lots of signs like that around the country. They're easy, and they're easy to figure out how to do one. This use is perfect for that area. You can combine the patios and have outdoor dining, something that everybody wants to have in a very beautiful setting. And as the gentleman so succinctly said, there's really no reason for a cigar shop. And I've gone by there, walking and running, and smelled a cigar, and I'm really looking forward to not having it there. So my motion is to approve this request.
Vice Mayor Leonidas?
Second.
All right. Any further comments or discussion? Okay, I'll call the questions. So all in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Seeing none, passes unanimously. All right. You've got a raw bar. Congratulations. Okay, next up, we have Item Number 10, which is, this is our general plan, our PD ordinance. So let's, let staff take it away for me.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council, council members. My name's Jennifer Armour. I'm your senior planner. The item in front of you is consideration of a new plan development ordinance proposed by the Plan Development Study Committee, developed over the last few years and now recommended to you by the Planning Commission. The recommendation is presented in three parts. The first part is a revised plan development ordinance, which is contained within Attachment Six to your staff report this evening. The second part is proposed changes to the table of conditional uses, primarily addressing residential in commercial zones. That also is part of Attachment Six. And the third is edits to the general plan, some minor changes to the language to accommodate this change to the residential uses in commercial zones. A list of other important issues was also developed by the Plan Development Study Committee with a recommendation that eight topics be considered. Planning Commission discussed these items, and staff has provided a summary of their discussion, along with additional recommendations by staff. This concludes staff's presentation, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions at this time from council? Seeing none, I will open the public testimony. I have no cards in front of me, and it looks like clerk has no cards either. Would anybody in the public wish to address us on this item? Seeing none, coming forward, I will close the public testimony and come, come back up to council again and see if they have questions, discussion or motion. Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. When I first joined the council, this was my priority. This is now my fifth year? So I'm very happy to see you come back. I've served on an ad hoc committee with Councilwoman Spector. We came up with language. It then went back to various Planning Commission, Town Council meetings. Then we then got a full Citizens Committee, which was very productive, by the way. And now we come back with an ordinance that's proposed, which came out of the committee that I served on, that I think captures the idea that we had in mind when we first worked on this, which was to reserve the use of plan developments for, basically, areas of land where we were trying to manipulate, not manipulate, but adapt the requirements such as setbacks and the amount of lots or the configuration of the road in order to preserve something. A hillside, a stand of trees, a historic home, a riparian corridor, whatever it might be, which was the original intent of the plan development versus having a flat piece of land that was then manipulated to put as many houses as possible on it. So with this ordinance, I, I would hope that the council would look at it and think that we've finally gotten there. I think the language is clear about when it can be used, when it can properly be used. And so my motion is, would be to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation, introduce the draft ordinance, which is Attachment Six, approve the general plan amendment, which is Attachment Seven, and approve those changes to the conditional use permit grid that need to occur in order to make this function properly.
Okay, I have a motion. Would anybody wish to second? Councilmember Sag.
I'll second the motion, and I'll just reiterate Councilmember Jensen's words of support. There were several of us on the, on the general plan committee, some planning commissioners, some council members, as well as members of the general public. And I think it did a complete vetting, and I, I feel very confident that the ordinance that we have moving forward is something that is representative of the discussion that we've had over the years and helps assuage the concerns some people have brought forward about plan developments in general.
Okay, Councilmember Spector?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, Ms. Jensen is correct. About five years ago, she and I served on an ad hoc committee, which, which came up with a proposed plan development with the intent of limiting its applicability. Because what had been happening up until then is that the PD was being used to circumvent our zoning and general plan mandates. And it was being circumvented almost inevitably in order to intensify housing above and beyond what our ordinance would have allowed. I was hopeful that, I am mindful of the fact that a town committee and the Planning Commission and now this council is going, is going to be supportive or looks to be supportive of this proposed ordinance. However, I'm not going to be able to support the motion because I look at the purpose and intent, and I look at the findings, and it is not where I thought the plan development would be going. I thought it would be limiting its applicability and tightening the, the Planning Commission and the council's analysis of when a PD is being used. As it currently is structured, a PD could be used if there is a public benefit, which is somewhat kind of the wording that we had before and the wording that was used to get around our ordinances and our general plan. It's allowable when there's affordable housing. Well, I actually think that's a really good idea, except then if you go to the findings section, you'll find out that only 40% of the units need to be affordable. So if you have a 20-unit proposal, you could have eight units that would be below market rate, and then you could have 12 that are one and a half, two, $3 million. As much as I really, really wanted to support this ordinance when it came back, for the reasons I just stated, I'm not going to be able to, and I, and I regret that.
Okay. Further discussion from council members? Seeing the town attorney's finger up?
If, if we could just get included in that motion, that the ordinance can be read by title only and waive all reading of the ordinance?
Is that acceptable to the maker of the motion?
Yes, it is. And then I'd also point out, with respect to the percentage of affordable housing and going through our certification for our housing element, one of the things that we discovered from the state is that once we put percentages on affordable housing, we got into trouble as that being a potential constraint on housing. And with the current state housing laws, this was an avenue to be able to produce some affordable housing, which is always difficult when, in Las Gatos with the land values that we have. So that's one of the reasons that was included.
And just double checking that, that the change was okay to the second or the motion also? Yes, I, I see shaking head. Okay, so further comments? Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor? Aye. And any opposed?
No.
So I have, any abstentions, none. So I have, passes four to one with Councilmember Spector opposed. So we are on to Item Number 11, which is recommendations from the Finance Committee. And I guess we're gonna get...
Mayor, we still need it read by title only.
Oh, yes. That's, thank you for reminding me. Please read the, the title.
Ordinance of the Town of Las Gatos amending Chapter 29 zoning regulations of the Town Code regarding plan development ordinances and the conditional use permit table.
Okay, thank you. So now we're on to Item Number 11, and it looks like Director Conway will, will start us off.
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. Good evening. I'm Steve Conway, Director of Finance. The item before you tonight, on April 9th, 2018, the Council Finance Committee met and reviewed the analysis of the additional discretionary payment strategy that had been proposed to address our unfunded liability with an accompanying policy the staff had recommended. The committee opted to pursue a different strategy and proposed that instead staff increased payments to the town's 115 trust fund as opposed to adopting a policy which would have paid, pre-funded or paid additional discretionary payments to CalPERS. So the item before you tonight is simply to follow the Finance Committee's recommendation, which was different than staff's recommendation.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions at this time? Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you. I actually have some questions on page five of the staff report, the first two paragraphs. I'm just trying to understand the dollar figures that are there. Because I look, first paragraph says, quote, "having the additional $400,000 in payments." Okay? The second paragraph says $390,000 and $300,000. But if I add up the recommendation, it was $235,000 and $155,000, which is $370,000, which I don't see anywhere. So I'm trying to figure out, how do these numbers all go together? Because there's 400, 390, 370. Which one is it?
Thank you, council member. The $400,000 is just a rounding to address your first concern. So that was the, and also the, if you add the, you're correct, if you add the $255,000 and the, the other amount, I believe it should be close to $390,000. If not, it was just a rounding. I believe that the 390 number was the number we needed at the time that was the, should have been, the total of those two to, to bring the payment down to a 20-year, 20-year amortization. So if that number is not adding correctly, then that is a, that's our mistake, but that should be the number, 390. The $300,000 is in the reserve policy right now. That's the money that we put in as a minimum into, council has in our general fund reserve for OPEB and pension, and that's something we do annually every year. So that, did I explain that? So the $400,000 was just a rounding up from the 390, and I think that was just the, I think the committee rounded it up.
That, that is my question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any further questions at this time? Seeing none, let me open the public testimony. I have Jack Van Nada first. Unless Leafago is ready for first.
Thanks. Sorry, doing some homework. I'm here to ask the council to take more time to ask staff questions before making the decision on this proposed resolution. I see that we want to pay a total of $690,000 each year to pay down the pension debt, which is a good thing. But for at least the next five years, we are projecting negative surpluses. Given that there is a downturn predicted in the next five years, what happens in the next six to 10 years? The staff proposed and the council approved to allocate $300,000 per year towards the paydown of the pension debt if there was a surplus available. This past week, the Finance Commission and staff recommended that the town pay another $390,000 on the debt, but again, only if we have money available to make the payment. Meanwhile, the CalPERS discount rate will continue. It's seven, it's dropped to 7%, and CalPERS has said that the investment returns will be dropping to about 6% for the next 10 years. What a drop in the discount rate and a drop in the investment return will mean is a significant rise of our pension debt, while having little to nothing for which to pay it down. We already blow over $1 million a year on interest, and this will continue to rise with the lower discount and investment rates. I can't be the only one that has noticed that this contradiction of assigning future funds we don't have to pay a debt that we do have. I have to think there's something significant that I'm missing. You have seen Mr. Keon's reports that he has sent to you from Moody's. If you don't believe us, you might believe Moody's reports that reinforces our premise that the town's general fund is cash-rich when compared to the rest of the United States. But Mr. Keon also... My premise is that we pay down the pension debt from money we have in the funds immediately. In fact, pay Calpers an additional $3.4 million more upfront in addition to the 4.4 we currently have allocated and start saving 7% tomorrow. My suggestions above should be qualified by first analyzing what the town, one, what the town requires for a minimum amount of operating cash, and two, the composition of each town fund, as well as why do we need that amount of cash in that fund? Based on our projected five-year negative budget, based on the Moody's reports, and based on how our surrounding towns compare to us, I ask that you get more information than taking action tonight. This is a very critical decision point. Without using our funds more wisely, we risk a much higher pension debt and we risk losing the support for the tax measure. Thank you.
Looks like you have a question. Councilmember Spector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Van Nada, we are being asked, the Finance Committee is recommending and the council is being asked to take a certain move tonight. Is your recommendation that we take cash out of our cash accounts and contribute that money to the unfunded liabilities inconsistent, in other words, could we do what we're being asked tonight and then address your issue some other night?
I don't actually know. I'd have to think on that one for a while, but what I was saying was, right now, based on the budget, losses for the next five years, where are you going to come up with the money to pay $300,000 and $390,000 over these five years? Additionally, you have a downturn forecast somewhere in the next five years, so what happens to years six to 10? So I'm saying it's a balloon. It's floating up there, but it has, it has no string attached. What you can do is you can take money now out of the funds and if you look at the Moody's, we're a well-funded town. I don't doubt that the money has been allocated to very valid projects out there, but any business knows, when you go into a downturn, you have to start making some cuts somewhere. And what we're doing right now is we're losing a significant amount of money due to this interest. So I kind of answered your question.
Kind of.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Councilmember Saak.
So, Mr. Van Nada, the recommendation that you're posing to us tonight, or the issue, was this an issue that you raised to the Finance Committee? So that's the first question. And then the second is, was there a specific response?
The issue I brought to them at that meeting was that I suggested 10 million instead of 7.8, in which case I was told by two other individuals that that's a pretty significant amount of money. And I say in here that, you know, there's two things we need to know. What does the town require for a minimum amount of operating cash, one? Two, what is the composition of each fund, as well as why we need that amount of cash in that fund? Those two things were said, 10 million was said instead of 7.8 million. 7.8 million is a lump sum payment. It's not something that you dollar-cost average, because we start making 7% on it immediately.
Okay. Further questions? Councilmember Jensen.
I wanted to follow up on Councilwoman Saak's question, because I don't quite think you answered it. I'll tell you what I believe you said. Her question was, did you bring it up to the Finance Committee? And what I believe you said is, yes, but I asked for $10 million.
Yes.
And then her second question was, what was the response? And I don't think that you answered that, but I'm assuming by what else you said in that you're here tonight is that the response was no.
The response was 10 million's too much. That it needed to be brought down to 7.8 on the one hand, and on the other hand, one of the individuals said, we don't know enough yet. We need these first two things answered, which was the minimum amount of operating cash and the composition of each fund.
Okay. Seeing no more questions, thank you. Let me just go to the town manager, sort of in a wrap-up of this. The town manager and I are planning, correct me if I'm wrong, to have a discussion about whether we should or how much we should pull out of funds during our budget discussion in the third week of May. And at that time, I had requested also more information, try to understand what is the right level for our reserve funds to be at. So, in other words, we're not intending to have that kind of discussion tonight. That's meant for when we have some more information on the 15th. So if you could corroborate my thinking.
Yes, that's correct. On May 15th, we will be considering our proposed operating budget. At that time, the town council will also be considering our reserve policy, which includes our budget stabilization and catastrophic reserve levels. So at that point, you will have additional data available to you if you wish to make adjustments and then determine what or where you might want to place any excess balance from those reserves to other purposes. Tonight, we're really just considering the Finance Committee recommendation and they recommended that any additional payment be made directly to the 115 trust, not to Calpers, as the speaker just recommended.
Councilmember Spector. I do have another speaker, by the way.
My first question is, do we have another speaker?
Yes.
All right, then let's finish the speakers and I'll wait until then.
All right. So next up, Lee Figo.
Good evening. I feel a little awkward, because I'm actually going to be reading from a letter that was submitted to you earlier this, the last couple of days, by Phil Cohen. So I'm going to do a little plagiarism and compounding the plagiarism, I'm going to dovetail on what Jack said, because I agree with him as well, that we need to look further at what we have in reserves, how we're allocating those reserves, do we have, this is going to sound funny, too much in reserves, particularly against what we're being faced with the very low returns from Calpers. Should we be putting more money into Calpers? And, actually, I'm not going to read from Phil's letter, because of the discussion that was, just took place and the fact that there's going to be another meeting on May 15th. I think when you start doing analysis of what you're holding in those reserve accounts, is it, this is going to sound funny too, too much? Are we reserving too much money? Would we be better spending that money by putting it into the Calpers paydown, which gives a 7% return as opposed to the 1% sitting in the reserve accounts? Clearly, the 7% is a much better return. Phil's note, I'm not going to read from it, but he did the calculations on where to get the $7.8 million from those reserves. He has submitted to you the calculations on what the differential would be on if you just put in the $300,000 versus putting in the 7.8 million now and what it will earn over the next 20 years. And clearly, putting the money into the, putting the 7.8 million into Calpers is the best return that you could do. Having that, getting that 7.8 million, where's it going to come from? Is it going to jeopardize any of the reserve funds that you have to have for operating the town and for any emergencies? That still leaves those reserve funds intact with what Moody's has identified is inadequate amount. So that's my plagiarism of Jack and Phil's comments.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Figo? Seeing none, thank you. Okay, I have no more cards. Would anybody else wish to address us on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public testimony and come back to council for more questions. I think I saw Councilmember Spector saying first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A statement and then probably a motion, but a question of staff. My recollection of the Finance Committee meeting is that the issue of using our reserves toward our unfunded liabilities was raised in verbal communications but not considered by the committee.
That's correct.
Okay. I think that the, well, first of all, it would be my preference that this concept of using our restricted funds for unfunded liabilities be considered by the Finance Committee. However, the Finance Committee is currently scheduled to meet once a quarter and since we just met one or two weeks ago, that's not going to happen before the budget. But that would be my first choice. My second choice is, as has been mentioned, that this concept be vetted by the council at, when we do our budget, because it's a potentially viable concept, but it needs to be considered against our other obligations. The idea of having monies sitting around getting 1% interest when the Calpers is effectively charging us seven and a half, I get it and I think that we should consider it. So, if the Finance Committee can't be brought together prior to our budget hearing, then I would suggest that that issue come before the council as a whole, as part of the budget hearing at that time. But for tonight, I'm going to move that we increase payments to the IRS 115 Pension Trust to lower the town's long-term unfunded pension obligations as recommended by the Council Finance Committee.
Do I have a second for this motion? Councilmember Leonardi, Vice Mayor Leonardi.
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. I will second the motion. I also agree with waiting till budget time to see what kind of money we have available for what and looking at things globally. It is important to consider all the expenses of the community and all needs, things such as road repairs, unfunded liabilities, parking garages, et cetera, et cetera. It would be, I actually thought of that a long time ago, especially since we came up with money to redo the Almond Grove streets, where we found that we had a little bit of excess in this bucket, this bucket, this bucket, and we found some money to actually get that done. And maybe there's room for discussion about that at the budget time, to see if there's excess money in these buckets. But in the interim, this is the recommendation of the Finance Committee, I think we need to take action right away on this to start the process of paying down the unfunded liabilities. And with consideration of what Mr. Van Nada said, yes, there could be shortcomings in the coming years budget-wise, but we can also look at our buckets or our excess funds or our revenue situation at those times to help balance the budget. So I would look at that as more of a long-term strategy with more information. And we welcome the public's feedback on that. Thank you for coming in this evening.
All right, thank you. Any more comments? Councilmember Saak.
Just a question of staff. Councilmember Spector had raised the possibility of the Finance Committee meeting prior to our council meeting. Is that a possibility?
The Finance Committee is currently scheduled to meet every other month on the even months and with budget coming up on May 15th and them already having their April meeting, we do not have another meeting scheduled till the end of June.
Okay, okay.
I do have a question. So in the Finance Committee, we were also considering a policy to go with this, an investment policy. And when we were talking about these funds, we talked about, you know, what if it's not available in a year? And you gave some examples of, okay, if we're short one year, it's the first thing we're going to fund the next year if we have funds available. Without that policy, is that still the way we're going to do it? Could you talk a little bit about, what do we do if we're short in a year and how do we catch up? And we had a whole bunch of plans behind that and is that still part of this?
So, Mr. Mayor, what we're planning to do now is roll that language into the proposed reserve policy, so that way we still demonstrate a commitment to funding and paying down our pension obligation, but we do it through our reserve policy as opposed to a new standalone policy, which had been originally proposed to the Finance Committee, where we would actually be paying directly to Calpers and paying off that debt. So a slightly different strategy based on the recommendation that came from committee.
But you would still be, the same philosophies we talked about-
Correct.
Of, you know, if we can't pay it now, we're going to do it next year, first thing, is we're still planning. Councilmember Spector.
That's the proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for raising that. That was actually, was a concept or a policy before the Finance Committee. I thought it was very well-received by the Finance Committee as a whole. And I also recall that that policy was going to come forward with this recommendation. I did not remember it being separated out and being brought to us separately. I thought it was going to be all one thing.
Yeah. Actually, upon more thought, as we started to think about what the Finance Committee did and how we could actually recommend it, we realized that because the reserve policies were coming back before the full council on May 15th, we had the ability to bring all of the reserve policies at one time, as opposed to bringing one piece tonight and then the next piece on the 15th.
Go ahead, Councilmember Spector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would then ask that when staff brings this back before the council as a whole, we all be reminded that the Finance Committee has weighed in on that one aspect of it and how we did weigh in.
Will do.
Okay. Further questions, discussions? I do have a motion and a second. If I see no other questions, discussion, then I'll go ahead and call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Seeing none, passes unanimously. And that is our last agenda item. If nobody has any comments they want to make, then we will be adjourned.